Announced inadequate notice of meeting pursuant to the open pursuant to the open public meetings in Act Chapter 231 Public Listen 1975. This meeting has been, meeting notice was sent to the Asbury Park Press on July 31st, 2020, and has been duly advertised in the Asbury Park Press issue of August 4th, 2020. All municipal parks, townships, and boroughs within the regional high school districts have been duly notified, and the requirements of postings and notices have been met on August 3rd, 2020. Tonight is a little bit different unfortunately because I lost and we all lost our Vice President to the Board, so I'm going to ask everybody to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and then please remain standing for one minute until I hit the gavel for a moment of silence with Jennifer Sotero who passed away unexpectedly last month. Next one will be speaking more about Jennifer Sotero, but I think it's appropriate at this time that I mention that she was the Alaskan rep and this was her very high school. And I knew her for over 10 years and I was so fond of her. It's quite a... I'm not myself tonight. Usually I'm a bit dazed because everybody was, but tonight I'm really dazed on this one because it's out of respect to Jennifer and I think I can speak to the entire Board in my right, but she was one of the most lovely people I've ever known. And we deeply miss her. Okay, moving forward. Moving forward, we have to elect a new Vice President, so the floor is open for nomination. The Vice President would be vocation to serve until the next reorganization meeting, which will be in January of 2021. Can I get a nomination from someone?
I have one.
Yes, please.
I'd like to nominate Diana Capiello for Vice President.
Okay, is there, are there any other nominations to be made? Hearing none, I'm going to close nominations and instruct the Board Secretary to cast unanimous vote for the nominating Mrs. Capiella. Yes. Okay, can I have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Second, for Sigley?
Then let's get a roll call.
Mr. Rooney?
Yes.
Mrs. Sigley?
Yes.
Mr. Ladd?
Yes.
Mr. Messinger?
Yes.
Mr. Moses?
Yes.
Mr. Perici?
Yes.
Mrs. Capiella?
Yes.
Mr. Ascol?
Yes.
Mr. Tiscana?
Yes, sir.
Okay, are there any changes to the executive agenda you wish to know?
Calling changes, the Presidents of the Board did not discuss the status of the negotiation agreements. The Board did not conduct the HIV report. Only other addition would be the Board did discuss the box number seven matters concerning client privilege related to reopening and returning to school.
Thank you, Mr. Tiscana. May I, may I have a motion to approve the minutes of July 20th, 2020 regular meeting? I need a motion for something.
Motion.
Please.
Second.
Second, Mrs. Capiella. Discussion, anyone? Could I have a roll call, please, Sean?
Mr. Rooney? Mrs. Sigley?
Yes.
Mr. Ladd?
Yes.
Mr. Messinger?
Yes.
Mr. Moses?
Yes.
Mr. Perici?
Yes.
Mrs. Capiella?
Yeah.
Mr. Ascol?
Yes. Communications are on file in the office of the Board Secretary. Now it's time for the, for me to heal the floor, and this is a very important session to the Superintendent. We've got some major topics to discuss tonight. And if you would, Mr. Sampson, could you take the policy portion also and discuss that? And we usually have Board reports. We did not have a curriculum construction. That's coming next time, and we don't have the financial report, so if there's only policy, I'd ask you to.
So thank you, Mr. Ascol, and the two policies are the mandated policies from the state on the Restart and Recovery Plan, the late school reopening, and the remote learning option for families. And there's also a required policy. I'll dig into that a little bit when I go into just the overview of what's on here tonight and what our school reopening plan looks like and what the Board is ultimately being asked to take action on. I do want to just echo Mr. Ascol's sentiments with Mrs. Sotero. We have a family coming at the next Board meeting, but Jennifer was on the board here that hired me in 2010, actually, when I entered here for the first time. And was an outstanding woman. We cared deeply about her community and importantly, her family contributed regularly to the betterment of the community, and I think that the saddest part of this evening is that for years, the only auditorium in this district that did not have air conditioning was in Alaskan High School. And Jen would really, would really let me know that Alaskan was, but when are we going to get fixing an Alaskan? And we were finally able to do it this past year, and this is actually the first meeting of the new AC system. And I think it's, you know, tragically ironic that it's the first meeting that we have after, after jumping the past. The family certainly in our thoughts. She was a great woman and always, always incredibly generous to me personally and looking forward to having Steven and hopefully the children attend. They always come to the Board meeting where we can, we can recognize our service one way.
Steven was our husband and we keep him as such a wonderful person. And just two days before Jennifer passed, the kind of woman she was, she was on the dialysis machine and on the telephone at the same time doing, conducting their business programs and working. So I'm just still in full denial of her presence.
So thank you, Steven. So, so tonight was not originally scheduled Board meeting, a regularly scheduled Board meeting. It was August 24th. The reason that we scheduled this special session was to approve our school reopening plan. A couple of things, you know, to take a step back. First and foremost, many members of the community, there have been three large scale and very specific and highly detailed video updates that have come in from our community forum meetings, and those were, those occurred at the end of June, on July 15th, and again on August 5th, so there's, there's three, three extensive 35 to 45 minute videos that really walked the public through our thought process on school reopening from start to finish. A number of contributors to that plan, you know, obviously teachers, administrators, Board members, community members, parents, students, medical officials from Center State, as well as our school physicians, parents in the community that have medical backgrounds as well. And also there were somewhere around 80 individuals on that, on that community forum that served as a feedback to our planning process over the past couple of months. I've opened up each of those updates, asking the public to take a breath. There are incredibly strong opinions on both sides of events about school reopening. There are, for every email that I get from someone who says, "How dare you put a mask on my child", I get an email that says, you know, "I don't want my child returning to school." In our community, when we surveyed our community back in June, it was clear at that time about 82% of our school community wanted some form of in-person learning involved, regardless of what that context looked like, whether that was full at the time or in what we refer to as a hybrid model, which is some combination of in-school and at-home. So we've worked through this process and the policies that are, that are a one-time adoption are very clear. They go through very specific protocols that we've had to follow. So the New Jersey Department of Ed, a couple of months back, we issued something known as the Road Back. It's 104 pages of guidance and requirements, and we have to make sure that we meet all of those requirements. Our policies are clear on the various specific areas in which we need to meet those requirements. And so from a process standpoint, what will happen, once the Board approves the plan, that plan tomorrow will be forwarded to the County Office for his review, and I'm going to say review because he does not technically review the plan. The County Superintendent of Schools reviews the plan to ensure that we comply with all of the components for school reopening. Personally, that, that sounds like passing all of the, all of the elements of opening onto the Golden School District itself. Be that as it may, our plan ultimately, we're putting forth for adoption tonight includes the following processes. And I will, I will direct everyone to our most recent community forum where we clearly go through the plan in great detail. But also tomorrow morning, upon Board approval, every member of the school community will see the detailed version of the plan, both in a narrative form that outlines everything that we've done and outlines specific resources for the plan, as well as a visual depiction of the plan that is more of a snapshot version for parents to, to help parents sort through all of the information that's there. So in other words, where is my child going to go to school? What's it going to look like in what's that schedule? It's a pretty, it's a pretty simple view of a complex situation. We looked at a number of models. We originally started with a belief in bringing all kids back every day of the week, and we worked backwards from there. A number of hurdles that ultimately pushed us to come with the recommendations that we are. You know, there are a number of requirements that we need to meet. We don't want to serve lunch, so we went through partial day. Then we were originally looking at an every other day schedule. Ultimately, the schedule that we handed on for a number of reasons is what is simply a, a, a schedule where students are divided by the alphabet, and we've had a number of questions on why we're divided by the alphabet. It's not possible to divide the grades by grade level. Too many students populate different classes and multiple grade levels, so it doesn't work from the scheduling standpoint. So we utilized the alphabet and we went with an A through L, an M through Z model. The students meet in the A through L model meet on Mondays and Tuesdays and every other Wednesday with a partial day. And students M through Z meet on Thursday and Fridays and every other Wednesday with a partial day. What that looks like is a 1-1-1-2-2, 1-1-2-2-2 model. That's how students attend school. When we surveyed our, our school community, approximately 18.6% of our parents informed us that they wanted a remote-only option. At that time, that was not an option from a stage perspective. We pushed the Governor's Office very, very thoroughly on that to make that an option. We did. And we were thankful for that. And so if you take the 50% and the 50% of students of which we've divided them, and then you take another approximately 20% out of that bucket, what we look at on a school building for any given day is approximately 40% of the student population. In, in looking at other school districts over the past couple of weeks, there has been a slight increase in the number of parents requesting remote-only options. So we expect that 18% number to probably climb somewhat, which will allow us to further reduce the density in the buildings for the students that do want to access the hybrid learning. And again, I'll reference my, my presentation where I go through in great detail some safety protocols, but some of those include the following. We have a daily temperature screening that is going to have to be done at home. We have temperature scanners in each of the buildings that everyone who's in the audience tonight walked through. We have at least two of those in each of the high schools. They can, they can service up to 70 students a minute walking through that, so we don't think that the flow will be very difficult. We have installed all touchless bathrooms. We're in the process of making all of our bathrooms and all of our water bathrooms and such touchless across the district. Every single classroom is equipped with a, a, a large, a large public sanitizing wipes and a hand sanitizing station for students to utilize to both sanitize their hands and wash down, to wipe down their desk before they sit on their desk. We have purchased a number of electrostatic sprayers that are, are used EPA approved cleaning to quickly sanitize rooms and school buses. So our school buses run on a tiered system. Approximately 25% of our parents said that they will not access the school bus. And then when you take that 25% again from the 50% that will be utilizing it on each, any given day, you're left with somewhere around 38% of the students that would be on school bus at any given time, which allows us to put them in masks. They have to wear masks, students, but to certainly social distance to the greatest extent possible on those school buses in. We have tiered bus runs. Our electrostatic sprayers will be used on every single bus between runs to sanitize that, that area. When students then enter the schoolhouse, they will all go through the temperature screen after having filled out the screening checklist. We have, we are repurposing our, our spaces to utilize one-way hallways to place dots and other insignias on the floor to recognize six feet of distance. We are staggering our bell schedules to move students through the hallway, and we feel very confident in managing that in a, in a very safe way. We've gone even so far as to tape out the front area of classrooms to ensure that no faculty members within six feet of a student in close contact for more than a few minutes at a time in the event that if there's a positive test, the faculty members will, will be on the team. So that's some of the, some of the, some of the, the safety end of, of some of this, the facilities end. We've also repurposed all, so we've worked with an engineer and an energy specialist to repurpose, to review all of our ventilation systems in each of our classrooms. And so the standard from the CDC is that that airflow is at 15%. All of our ventilation systems are now set to 20%. We've also worked with an engineer to develop a system where our air is flushed out at the end of each day for a two-hour period of time, which basically cycles the airflow as if it was three different ways. So anybody who comes back into the room the next morning, it's like three days of air that wand through that room before anybody's back in there itself. We've taken this work very, very seriously. Also, we've purchased our custodial staff to ensure that during the school day, we have, we have an overabundance of staff available to continue regular cleaning of the building during the day. Students will be required to wear masks during the school day. Originally, you were allowed to take your mask off if you were able to socially distance. Just last week, the Governor changed that with a new executive order. We responded by altering our schedules in our six high schools to accommodate for mask breaks utilizing outdoor areas and courtyards. So we will, within a scope of, on the next two different times during the Marshall Day, students will be allowed to, you know, take, take, take 10 minutes for themselves and take the break with their, their mask off while engaged in their class. We also have, have, have looked to ensure that every student is connected in the district. So one of the, one of the mandates was to ensure that there's, that you eliminate the visible divide as much as possible. In New Jersey, there were somewhere around 90,000 students or thereabouts that were never connected in the spring, which to me is, is hard to believe in 2020. Honestly, last year, we had, we distributed close to 500 phone books. The families needed it. As the pandemic went on, more families needed assistance. People lost their jobs. People were put in difficult positions. Parents were working from home unexpectedly. And we responded not just with devices, but we also worked with local cable providers to provide hotspots throughout the region. We already have those hotspots set up presently for the fall for anybody that needs it. We have devices for any student that's going to need it. We're currently working through the survey from our, from our parents now to make sure that we have all of our kids connected on day one. I'm not sure how some of these school districts could connect their kids during the spring at all. It took us less than a week to connect hundreds of kids that did not have devices or internet access. And we did most of that in less than a week here in the Old Eastern. So very proud of that work. From that perspective, we are ready to, we're ready to open and utilize those schools come the fall. The daily schedule will be synchronous, and what that means is much more specific to an on-time approximating the actual classroom. In the spring, by necessity, the district went to what is known as an asynchronous model. And sort of anytime, anywhere, you know, gives kids access to their work when they were able to. And that was when the pandemic was new. We've had four or five months to figure this out. As we open the schools in September, we will, students will attend five classes a day, and students who are home will be logging in at the time of those classes as well while the students are in school. For the families that access remote only, they'll log in at just like, you know, with the remote on the time of the classroom. When we surveyed our parents, again, 82% of them told us that they wanted some form of in-school learning for their children, and, and, and almost an equal number told us that they wanted a schedule that was much more like a regular schedule if we were to have to be remote in any capacity during the fall. I will say that as we sit here today on August 10th, we don't officially open our doors for another month. The entire world can change in a month. Right now in New Jersey, on, on August 10th, the rate of transmission is .98. That magic number there is one. It's under that number. The positivity rate is 1.62. This is according to Governor Murphy's press conference today. The magic number there is anything less than 2%. My team and I conducted a, almost a two-hour call with a number of the officials from Center State Hospital today and our school nurses. We went through our plan in great detail with them. They were very complimentary of the plan, and, and their feedback at this point in time is that given the current circumstance, unless the numbers, the community spread increases over the next couple of months, that they saw no reason why we could not open up in some form of in-person learning for the fall. We're, over the next month, we're going to obviously watch those numbers closely. The worst thing that could happen at this point in time, there are obviously a number of groups that are saying, "Don't open the schools." New Jersey is still in phase two. They've limited indoor dining. I think that any indoor activities are a critical component to watch over the next couple of weeks in terms of what that might mean for schools in the fall. So we'll be watching that closely. I think the worst decision that could come from any of the state officials would be to simply let districts decide whether they close or open. That's going to pick district against district and put an awful lot of artificial pressure on places where there may be very different dynamics or capacity to handle any in-school learning. There are a number of folks that are, you know, scared. I recognize that. I think my team recognizes that. We are working very closely with our Teachers Association to answer every question that they have and spending as much time as we need to to answer those questions as well, to answer their safety. The, the information that will be forthcoming to the school community tomorrow has a, a rather extensive frequently asked questions component to it that I think will further answer any specific questions that parents may have about the child's safety. And I shared this with the Board earlier. The best, the best video that I've seen about the COVID-19 pandemic came from a pediatrician who posted, whatever decision a family makes, whether that's to send their child back, to have their child learn remotely, that's the best decision for that family. Every family has their own unique context, their own unique needs, and their own unique circumstances. And so, you know, I, I do think that we have, we, we have a number of options for students, the parents that don't want to send their children back to the schoolhouse without having to live for all them from school in the remote option. And I think for the students, for the families who overwhelmingly ask for some form of in-person learning, we have a very safe plan to bring our students back at this point in time in September. So the policy this evening, Dr. Age will chime in if I miss anything, and I know you want to do this with a fine-toothed phone, but the Restart and Recovery Plan has some very specific criteria that we have to answer to, to the state of New Jersey, and that's all there and posted publicly since Friday. Again, I would, when the, when the communication comes out tomorrow, it will also include links to all three video updates so anybody could follow the progression of our thinking and, you know, why we planned it on the decisions we've had. We vetted our plan thoroughly. I am not an epidemiologist. I'm a Superintendent of Schools. You know, my job is to educate, provide education for children. So we've worked, we've leaned on our local health officials. And over the past three weeks, I've met with every single health official in Monmouth County multiple times to go through what our plan should look like. Our nurses have all been trained Johns Hopkins to, to assist in any, any contact tracing and such if there's any positive cases. This is where we're at in school in 2020. There is certainly a, a new paradigm to have to monitor through. Things can certainly change. There is four weeks, as I said earlier, until we actually open the schoolhouse. And so if there is a change in circumstances, we will change our plans. I will say one of the reasons that we built out our hybrid and our remote learning plan to approximate one another is in order to anticipate the fact that we may need to close schools. And we may be, even if we open remotely, I am sure that the transition would be a hybrid transition. You wouldn't simply transition back to all students back in the schoolhouse. And so we wanted both of those models to approximate one another as closely as possible so that we could toggle back and forth between those roles as we need to. And I'll, I'll refer to questions from the Board members.
Just want to call over line. But if you're on everyone, when we do, we have to announce to the parents, when the communication is announced to the parents and community, August 11th, which is tomorrow. From August 11th to August 13th, we are asking parents, so that we have a smooth transition to know if parents are looking at the hybrid model, which is the in-person, as Dr. Sanchez described. If there are families that are opting or looking to select the full-time remote learning option, we are asking for them to please identify that in the Genesis portal. We'll be giving out instructions for that. But we are asking each family, for each student in the district, to let us know what they want for their child for September. That way we can show we have a smooth transition to know what our exact numbers are for in-person.
Thank you, Dr. Age. So that, and all that will, will be going out to the larger community. to the larger community tomorrow.
So Jeff, and Mr. Dr. Age, if you could share with the public that opt-ins regarding, opting into remote and opting back at school in the coming event, that would imagine that there are parents that may decide after a few weeks they want to, you know, remote or they want to return to school. Never needs to be a process that follows that is, you know, makes teacher's jobs easier and increase the likelihood of that.
Yeah, certainly. I feel like I'm not looking at you. I apologize. You're getting a nice view of where it's going. The, so there, there's a process. And, and the process for a student that opts to, so let's say a student starts the school year hybrid, in-person. And after, you know, a couple of days, mom, dad, guardian wants a child to access the remote plan, we just ask for five-day week, week time on that so that we can, we can make sure that we, we set them up appropriately. Honestly, it would probably be, take a lot less time than that, but we would need some, some week time. Ready child that chooses to be in the remote option, we're asking that they remain there on a marking period basis and that at the end of marking period one, they would be able to decide if they would want to access the hybrid model, if it's still a hybrid model at that time, or if it's a return to school. Obviously, you know, we anticipate the COVID-19 concerns to be an issue over, you know, the foreseeable future and probably certainly the next, the next four or five months. Enter.
I have a question. What happens if somebody shows up and it's not their date coming to school? Does it happen?
Yes.
And then another question I had is with respect to, a lot of parents have indicated they don't want their kids on the bus. So similar to the discussion you had with the municipalities about traffic, any concerns about moving cars coming to the high school drop-off there? If that is that a concern that any municipalities have shown?
Yeah, so we're, we're working with our local police departments on that. Obviously, we anticipate an uptick in, in vehicle traffic rather than bus traffic. You know, so the principals have been working all summer on, on entrance protocols for, for onboarding off buses to the traffic flow and working closely with our municipal officials. So we feel very confident that we're going to be able to manage that well. I think like anything else, the first couple of schools, the first couple of days at school will probably be a little bit of a learning curve so that we understand the patterns and we can adjust accordingly and ask folks to, obviously, I think, you know, school is not going to look like what we are used to looking like, right? And that, that's an unfortunate reality, but it's the truth. And, and so I think that, you know, parents and students and faculty and staff will all be able to communicate from all of this, especially those first couple of days at school as all of this is new. So these are all new processes that need to, need to be worked through. And so the anticipation there certainly the first couple of days at school is that it will take more time. And then once we get our systems moving, it will, it will be like, you know, what the unit lunch was a couple, couple years ago. The first, the first couple of weeks as we, as we sorted through it, it was, it was very crowded. And then we were able to deviate that to the point where I haven't had, I didn't have an issue after two weeks, right? So I, so I think that that, you can, we would expect a similar process. There's a learning curve certainly for us to, to manage all of this. And we're going to obviously err on the side of safety and all of this, and that might, that might result in more traffic and people being asked to sit in their cars to make sure that we, we control the flow into the building. And I think that once we, once we get those processes managed, again, the principals have been working on this all summer, so they're not, this isn't news for them. You know, they, they recognize that there will probably be an uptick in all of this traffic and we have to manage it. So we, we work in closely.
Okay, then I just have two more questions about health care. So here's a theoretical, let's say during the day, a child, if there's a swim problem coming on, he goes home, parent takes him to the doctor to say, okay, you've had COVID-19. What would we as a district then have to do once that student finds out he had it and he was in the building that day?
So the guidelines follow the CDC guidelines for what's known as close contact. And close contact is defined as being within six feet of an individual for 15 minutes, right? And so the, they have, we have to work closely with Monmouth County health officials and all of this. So the student presented as positive on, on COVID test, we then have to obviously work through, the first call is to the health officials and to walk through with them what we have. We then have to work backwards in school days and identify who might, that student might have been around. And we would notify all of those individuals, obviously. As far as pulling out the spider web of the contact tracing, the health officials would handle that. And so we would handle the immediate stuff in the schoolhouse. And then the health officials would handle whatever goes beyond. And we would work under their guidance and try to say, who needs a quarantine and what that might look like for long term.
So the school does not have to do contact tracing?
Correct. So the contact tracing, and, and this is one of the, this was one of the discussion topics with the Monmouth County health officials. You know, they, they do, contact tracing is their business. It's not the school's business. It is our business. We do know if, if a student's in Class A, Class B, Class C, we know who's sitting next to them. We, so all of our teachers also are going to be required to keep, you know, student information system seating chart so that we can readily access who sat next to who during the school day. But the, the, as far as the, the more extensive contact tracing, the health officials will handle all of that. That is not, that is not the school's role.
And if federal law, that's a subject of policy. Is it confidentiality, like?
Yeah, we have to maintain confidentiality. So, so there's, there's simple, there's simple compliance that needs to be there. And so even if you're notified that, you know, your child may have been here, somebody who presented as COVID positive, we're not going to identify you in the middle of the school. You know, we can't.
One last question. So about the data, right? So the Monmouth County Health is the entity that's currently here, right? But let's say there's this high control between those two, right? And then in Allen County or rural area, there's not one basic code. So Monmouth County Health is the entity that's going to say, okay, you're hoping to know these are the numbers, you have to go over them. That needs to be with this data and are they going to be able to make that as a back end?
Yeah, so, so they would, they would make recommendations to the school district based on the data that they have available. And so the, the health officials have the larger picture in the county that we may not be aware of. One of the reasons why our partnership with Center State is so valuable is they also have access to a lot of that data. And, and the Center State officials were kind enough to, to literally give us the, the access to the back phone today so to get regular updates from them as we move through the school reopening. And if there's any, if they see any update in any of the, the cases or positive rates or anything like that at, at the local level, then they're going to be informing us on a regular basis as well. So it's, we're working with the health officials. We're going to work closely with our local hospital. And we'll make the most important decisions at that point in time based off the data that they have because they obviously have a much more comprehensive view than being able to just school itself because they would be aware of what the community spread looks like.
Yes, there's one question. Did we say what your policy is at this point?
Yeah, so the, the policy is just the, what I went through is really what's embedded in the policy in this process of all. So the, the restart and recovery plans, all the components of the plan that I went through are required as, that need to be adopted formally. It's an interesting dynamic that the state set up, and I'll just make two quick notes. The state made it so that the board of that doesn't have to approve the plan, which I, I think is highly questionable, right? And so we wouldn't move forward with anything of this nature without the board's support in this place. And then the state also required individual students to sign an attestation, which I would refuse to sign because it, it seems that the state wants to place all liability directly on local school districts with information that we cannot access and don't have access to. So I can't attest to anything that I don't know from the state. And so that, that's the, that's the reality of how we, how we dealt with this pandemic at, at state level at present.
I want to keep this very rapid, but I do have an important point. Council, do you agree with what Ms. DeSantis said about not saying that?
Yes, in fact, Dr. Samson and I have had a number of conversations about that, both locally and also having other associations in the state, some issues with that attestation in return behind it.
That was the first thing that I said also. Okay, there was some old time that we, 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 so yes.
So the question was, why is there such a document? No such document was required for small business owners to reopen. No such document was required for municipalities to reopen directly, to reopen. It was a bit of a surprise when the attestation was announced for the first time during one of the governor's press conferences. And then it was dropped into the Department of Education website on COVID-19 without any real explanation as to what the purpose was behind it and what the real reason was.
But I, I just, I do want to reiterate, we are still one now from school. And we're going to monitor the situation very closely. And our community can expect that if something changes, our plan will change.
Okay. Mr. Boyd, so there are any changes to the executive wish for the?
Yes. Yes, I'd like to remove Resolution I-1, which was approved to submit application for school security grant, which we still intend to do as soon as it becomes a general in the White States. So to put that off till the next agenda and if we have that information, then we can.
Okay, I'm going to call on Mr. Dillon. Are there any members that wish to participate? Any?
God members wish to participate.
Nobody wants to participate, okay. May I have a motion to approve G-1 through K-4 with a modification as noted by Mr. Boyd and that's in hitting I-1. And I have a pen, any discussion? Here's one, five, Mr. President.